Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Holyoke Public School Committee for Monday, August seventeenth. The meeting will start now at six oh one P M. Roll call, please, Liz.
Sure, Mayor Morris.
Present.
Mr. Faye.
Present.
Mr. Sheehan.
Present.
Mrs. Burnell, Ms. Burnell.
Sorry.
Ms. Burnell.
I don't understand.
Ms. Penzley Williams. Mrs. Burks.
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Feliciano Sims.
I'm mute.
Sorry, present, good thing we're good.
Mr. Well.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Colomore. Does anybody see Mr. Colomore's number down here? We can at least give him credit for being present. No.
Don't see him.
Mr. Kushane? Okay.
Uh, present, present.
Oh, thank you.
Liz, I also see Aaron's. I don't know if that's.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay.
I'll switch to my computer in just a second, just walk in the door.
Thank you.
No problem, thank you. All right, so if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I don't see Niles here, so we're just gonna assume there's a flag.
Niles is here.
Oh, he is? Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
America.
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So I just want to remind everyone that pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty, I hereby am informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting, and the meeting is being livestreamed and run live on the city's community TV channel, Fox Cast, and Facebook Live interpreted in Spanish. Iron, the next item on our agenda is the student showcase. Uh, we have Gio from the Transitions Program. Um, where's Dr. Vasquez? I'm like looking for Dr. Vasquez Matos on the screen.
Great, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. It gives me great honor this evening to, uh, present, for me, my for- formal first student showcase as superintendent, and we have today, uh, with us this evening, uh, Giovanni Reyes, who is part of the Transition Program, who have done phenomenal work over the summer, um, and been very impressed. I've heard from Chief Carrier so many great things. Um, he's being joined today by, um, his job coach, um, El Carrera, who I've heard also amazing things, and her dedication and passion in supporting our students. So I know Mary Ann wants to also join me and kind of welcome them, so Chief Carrier is gonna do a brief kind of synopsis of the program, and then Giovanni will, um, uh, showcase some of his experience as well, the work that's been done over the summer.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Vasquez Matos. Um, I am thrilled to have, um, you know, one- one of our superstars, um, from our Transition Academy Program with us this evening. Um, Gio is like the mayor of Transition Academy, um, so he will be able to really talk about, um, the exciting work that they did. Um, we were, we were so pleased that we were able to offer in-person learning for our, uh, learners in the Transition Academy Program for part of the summer, and the work that they were able to pass into, um, those several weeks that they were in person was absolutely amazing. Um, so we're thrilled to be able to, to have, uh, Gio here to talk about that a little bit. Um, they've also prepared a slideshow, so, um, without further ado, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, to Giovanni Reyes. Um, you guys can start presenting the slide. He's gonna choose himself right now.
My name is Gio, and I'm a student at the Transitions Academy. We're gonna be talking about the, my experience in the summer program for the summer, past summer. Um, the mission was to provide an exclusive program that is community-based for a variety of individuals with varying interests and abilities. We offer participants and individualized experience based on their preferences and for a career pathway. Um, my re- my remote learning was good. It didn't, it didn't felt the same because on virtual, it's like, it's not the same love that you get when you're face-to-face with friends and, um, and teachers that you've known from the past, and, and it was very distracting because I can see what their house was like, what, um, the scene them, that you can see them, even though they're muted, but you can tell that they were talking with, either with family or with parents or with siblings. And that was very distracting, but I didn't that, I was okay. Yeah, I had stress, but, um, at least my friends were there to support me and, and the way I needed them to. We were, we were doing, we were working on vocational lessons, social skills lessons. We would do current events before it started. Um, well, when it started, it will be the, the current events, but before, it will be the daily challenges. And if we had time in the end, we'll do games or recreations. Those are some of the pictures of those students, um, that they've learned on the, on working from home and doing also the virtual classes. And on the site, experience was amazing. It was good because I got the love that I missed from staff and students. Um, the staff weren't, the, they stood the same. They weren't, they didn't change. Yeah, they would say like to make sure we kept our masks on, do the social distancing of six feet, but I didn't not, the teachers, um, here in the Transitions Academy stood the same, and I'm glad that they did. Um, I did the, I would do chores, which now I learned that here in the site, and if we were to do it for the school year, it's to make sure that the tables and the chairs are, are all right. Disinfected and, and make sure that it's, um, clean and safer the next day of the students that come in that missed a day. Um, you can, next slide. Um, here we learned on the pictures, you can see that we learned to make sure that everything is disinfected, make sure everything is clean and safe, um, that there's, that they, we won't get sick from the virus. You can switch. That's, um, on the pictures, you can see more of the, of our students learning to disinfect everything, taking out the trash every, daily, and, and practicing living skills. Next, please. And here, you see in the pictures that they're learning the self-advocacy, which it's helped me in the past because now I could, I'm able to speak up, and, and it's helped me out a lot because now I can speak up where before I couldn't. Well, I could, but I just didn't know how to. The worksite experiences were amazing. They haven't changed. It's, um, one of the options I chose was to go to the schools and make sure they had the signs that say to keep your mask on, to social distance of six feet. And I like that because at least the schools know that for when it's, when it starts back up, whenever it starts back up for the school year, that the students and the teachers know that they're gonna social distance of six feet and keep their mask on and to make sure they wash their hands and, um, hand sanitize their hands. Next slide. Um, on one of the pictures, you can see, um, I put up one of the signs, um, that say to keep your mask on, and we always work hard to make sure the schools are ready for the school year. Next slide. Um, this is one of the schools we chose to work at. Um, I didn't go, I didn't go to that school, um, for the summer, but you can, you can see in the pictures that they're, that they're, um, hand sanitizes, they're disinfecting the library for the students that, that, so it will be ready for the students to come in. Next slide. That's also one of the pic, that's also of Don Huel, that you can see that they're doing the, um, they're disinfecting the library, they're picking up, um, outside from the storm we had not so long ago. Um, we also do, we also did food, food deliveries, um, to students that didn't have food, um, which was also great to see because we were able to be part of it, see our friends, help others that need food. Next slide. Here is, um, in the pictures, you can see that the students are making sure that, that some of them schools, like Metcalf is ready for the, is getting disinfected, ready for the school year. You can see that there, there's some helping out outside from the storm that we've had not so long ago with all the trees. And you can see that they're also picking up the, for Metcalf, the trees that've fallen from the storm, cleaning in the inside, making sure that it's disinfected, some, um, and it's ready for the school year. Next slide. This is one of my favorites that I would do before the virus started, was doing the central office, which was, I'll go with my best friend, one of the students here named Jamil. Um, we would go to the central office to shred papers, and it was fun. Let's, let, um, it'll, it, it's like a good sensation because you feel calm, you can put all that frustration on shredding paper. And you can also see that we've had some of those students graduating from, from any of the, from the high schools, um, that are ready to start their year here in the Transitions Academy, which was amazing that we were able to, they were able to work with us in the, in the summer program not so, not so long ago. And and this is our quote that we have. It said, the, here's a quote, and it says that the secret to, the secret of change is to focus all of our energy, not on fighting the old, but on building the new. Thank you.
That was awesome, Giovanni. Thank you so much. I miss seeing you. I love seeing you, and I haven't seen you in so long, so it's a virtual hug for you. Um, does anybody have any comments or questions for Giovanni, the Transitions Program? Please use your raised hand, but I see you anyways, Ms. Burks. Go ahead.
Giovanni, great presentation, as usual. You do your presentation so well, and I'm so highly impressed with you. Um, so are you sad that summer's over, and are you ready to go back for fall, and are you excited?
I am. I am ready to go back to the fall because the summer was good. It's just, I didn't like that it was virtual because I'll be bored afterwards because there's nothing else to do, which is just be at home, do whatever. But I am ready for the fall, and I know, because as you can see, all the students were showing that they know how to social distance, wear the mask, and I'm know, deep in my heart, that we can show it for the school year.
You guys are amazing. You did a great job. You did a great job this summer in going back virtual and staying safe. Your staff all did amazing, and I applaud all of you because it was a really well-thought-out plan, and you guys did really, really well. So congratulations on that. Um, and I hope we get you back in very soon.
Thank you.
Dr. Vasquez Matos, you don't have to raise your hand. You can just go ahead and interrupt.
I'm next.
Uh, Gio, thank you for that one.
Rosalie, Rosalie, I'll get to you. One moment. Go ahead, Dr. Vasquez Matos.
No, Rosalie can go ahead if she wants. Yeah, Rosalie, please, I'll follow you, I'll follow you.
Okay, uh, hi, everyone. I am, I miss you all a lot. Um, and I just want to say to the young man that just spoke, we are very, very proud of you, young man. Um, keep up the good work, and anything you need from us, don't hesitate to let us know, okay? We're praying that the kids can get back to school ASAP. But until then, please stay safe, okay? And God bless you all.
Thank you, Rosalie.
Rosalie, if you have your television on, could you turn the volume down a little when you unmute, please?
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, is that good?
Yes, thank you.
Nodding our head over here. We forgot that you're on the phone. Yes, that's good. Sorry.
That's okay, sweetie.
So Gio, thank you so much for that wonderful presentation. It, it was, it's, it's inspiring. It dem- it demonstrates leadership. It demonstrate giving back to the community. It demonstrates to me personally, that sometimes we take the simple things for granted, and you have actually showcased that those simple things really make an impact for our society and our community. And you are definitely a positive social change agent for not only the Holyoke community, but anyone who's watching this. And that's an inspiration, and that's the reason I wake up every single day, is actually to see students like you, lead by example, be inspiring, inspire us, and making sure that you really change the world to be a better place. And you've demonstrated that in your presentation, you demonstrated it in your words, and we can actually see it in your passion and your love for learning, and that, to me, is inspiring. And to, um, Ms. Rivera, your love and your passion for your students is why we come to work every day too, and know that we are here to support you, and I am proud to be your superintendent, and I am proud to work with you on behalf of students like Gio.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I love working with this community.
Thank you both so much again. Gio, I can't wait to see you at our next event when we're back to events again. I miss you, bud.
Yeah, I miss you too.
Well, thank you guys for coming and sharing your experience over the summer at the Transitions Program. We're not gonna hear the end of you guys. I know that for a fact. We love the Transitions Program, and we're gonna be excited to have you back again. Good luck this fall. Take care. Thank you. So, moving on, I just want to remind everyone, um, sorry I didn't do this before. Um, only those that are on the actual school committee, the members along with, um, the receiver, Dr. Vasquez Matos, remain on screen. Um, the others, if they can please, just have their picture up, um, or their name, just no, no video at this time. Um, when it's time to hear from you guys, I guess Dr. Vasquez Matos will call upon you, and then you can get back on the screen. Um, also reminding everyone, do not chat in the chat box. Um, if you have a question or you have a comment, please raise your hand. We're gonna try to run this meeting as smoothly as possible. So moving on with that, is there any, did anybody send any public comment, Liz? Liz, you're off. I don't see you. I just see your picture.
I'm, I am ever-present, Mildred. Can't get rid of me that easily. I have had no public comment.
All right, great. So we're gonna go ahead and move on to communit- com- communications and reports. Um, so Dr. Vasquez Matos, that's you, my friend.
Thank you. So I just want to get the opportunity to shine, to share an update to the, a kind of a summary, kind of the highlights to the reopening plan for Holyoke Public Schools that, um, was released on Friday, was sent to the school committee, and then, uh, released later that, uh, uh, evening. So as you know, we've been, we've been continuing to have ongoing conversations, gathering feedback, stakeholder, stakeholder, stakeholder input as it relates to our reopening plan, as well as also looking at the data that's, and the guidance that's been provided us both by the local, um, and state. So in response to family, student, staff, and community feedback, and due to the current health environment in Holyoke, the majority of, uh, HPS students will start the school year remotely in order to ensure that students who need the most get the most. And we have selected K to twelve students of whom in-person introduction is most essential, and their families will have the option to choose in-person or fully remote learning based on the criteria. These group of students includes career and vocational technical education at the Dean Campus, students with disabilities in substantial separate classroom, and English learners defined as newcomers. Newcomers are students who have newly arrived two years or less to the mainland U S and are new to English-dominated instruction. Newcomers have limited English proficiency and need support in acquisition of the English language. However, throughout the year, we will consider adding students for whom remote learning is less conducive. We plan to contact families of selected students as early as next week, and continue to do that by the end of the month, and strongly encourage them to consider in-person learning when it's appropriate to do so. So throughout the presentation, I've asked some of my, uh, cabinet members who have been working diligently with me on trying to put together, as you probably saw in the plan, the different areas of our, um, reopening plan. And with that, I want to introduce our chief instructional officer, Valerie Aneer, who will talk a little bit about our academic programming and what would it look like.
Hi, I'm happy, um, to share some information with you. Um, the next couple of slides have to do with our academic plan, and I just want to mention that there is a lot of collaboration happening with this planning, um, both through the academic department, uh, and the directors, teachers who have served on committees. Uh, Dr. Vasquez Matos and I, um, and his ca- and the full cabinet, um, meet regularly, and in, that's what informs all of this planning. Today, we spent, um, from eight to two uh, in different sessions with principals to roll out the plan with them. Uh, they had already seen the plan, but to get further information and clarification, and through that process, some of the information on this slide has updated even from me submitting it um, yesterday to this afternoon. And so I'm gonna share with you what's remaining the same, and I will verbally share some of the changes, um, or enhancements, that refinements that are being made based on collaboration with the principals from this afternoon, along with the school supervisors. The, the pieces that remain the same are the larger bullet points on this slide. So our academic plan will continue to balance synchronous and asynchronous learning. So live virtual versus self-paced virtual learning, and the next slide will show you information on that, but we'll wait a moment. Our initial planning, based on some of the literature we had been reading, asked for us, or led us to believe that these balances between synchronous and asynchronous that you see here would be best for student learning. And we were looking for no more than fifty percent of a student's day at pre-K to two to be spent in a synchronous live, um, session, and then you can see the, the balance for the other grade levels. That is going to shift a little bit based on our work this morning with principals. I am continuing to pull research, and will do so throughout the week. Uh, but we are going to balance more, um, more clearly what the expectation is between synchronous and asynchronous. And we would like to even further refine the quote-unquote "screen time" that we're asking students to manage through the synchronous sessions, and may pull back a little bit from these current, uh, this current model. Our goal is to have a set time across all pre-K to eight buildings where student learning time is consistent across all the buildings. This would allow for us to plan for after-school supports that are planned for remotely with our, our schools that have Twenty-Four Century programming. In addition, it allows, uh, and, and, uh, very importantly, it allows for Cohort C to continue to receive in-person learning with their ESL and their special education, uh, staff, while also being able to attend the content direct instruction sessions with their class, uh, their classmates and their, their age-appropriate peers. So by splitting the day, by putting the pre-K to eight on the same schedule, uh, student schedule, that allows for us to say what hours we have for synchronous learning, what hours we will have for asynchronous learning, and it allows our, our children to be able to participate both in the content instruction uh, at their home schools as, as well as the in-person learning with, with ESL and special education staff. So that's one shift that you'll see from, from this slide. All of our profi- all of our learning academic plans that have been created by staff over the last month, few months, and have a very strong social-emotional learning component, there's opportunity for both direct instruction, and it has been embedded in all of the curricular units. Uh, the first eight weeks is very heavy on building community and establishing, uh, relationships with students. Originally, we asked, uh, principals to begin to think about scheduling as if you would in a brick-and-mortar setting or a live normal class setting. But what I just mentioned about splitting asynchronous and synchronous learning has adapted down a little bit. So the plans for what our schedule will look like will be based on the, um, consistent schedule across all of our pre-K to eight schools, and then we will give the, the hour bands of what the synchronous should be and asynchronous. The reason we're also, um, making that consistent across all schools is so that we can not only provide stronger supports both for our Cohort C students and those who, um, require both Cohort C and in, and, uh, content instruction with their, their regular peers, but also to provide, uh, less interruption in live teaching for other services that we know are needed, such as making sure that our food distribution is happening during asynchronous learning time so that we're not interrupting students' participation in class activities and, and classes. Our learning management system and how we're gonna communicate both what our learning is both what our learning is and through, with parents, is going to be CSO for grades pre-K to two and Google Classroom for three through 12. We are currently working to develop professional learning for all staff in both of these areas, as well as secure and set up CSO, because this is a new program for our pre-K to two. And so, the IT department and I are working closely to expedite that process so that we can get it set up as soon as we can. And we also are going to be using Zoom platform for all of our synchronous sessions. So, this graphic here is to show you a little bit about what the difference between synchronous and asynchronous learning is. And so, in a nutshell, synchronous learning happens in real time. It happens in its bounded time. It's during a class period. It's engaged through the, virtually, through technology, like we're engaged right now together. It allows for a more dynamic experience, and we know that through, our students learn the best through rich dialogue and class discussions and questioning, and that allows for that opportunity, along with collaborating with one another. And then I can get in-time real instructional support. So, if I'm struggling through the lesson or through the work, I have access to the teacher as I would in a live class. They're right there with me. Asynchronous, it has some benefits too, though. So, it allows for scheduling of my learning and my work, what works best for me as a student, and my family's schedule. It's self-paced, so I can work around my family's needs, even as a child. That's important. I might be sharing space, learning space with siblings or with others. And so, this allows for me to do the work when, as a student, when I find it most beneficial for me. And it has more flexibility, which is that. The instructional support still happens, but it's not necessarily live. It's now through communication modes such as messaging and email. And so, I just gave you like a quick and dirty overview. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Mahoney, who will give you a little bit more information regarding the high school model.
Okay. Hi, folks. Like Val, we have been thinking through what remote and in-person learning is going to look like here on our campuses, Dean and North in particular. We are building on our lessons that we've learned from the spring, as well as the lessons that we've learned, as you know, that we were one of the few schools in the state to run a live summer school program, as well as we've, we've got well over 300 students who've earned credit through our continuing remote learning over the summer. So, we've, a couple of key lessons that we've got, and these are in our notes, but having a, as Val said, having a structured day with beginning and end times for kids. We think that this is going to be a value-added for both teachers, students, and for families to know where their students are supposed to, where their children are supposed to be at what times, and gets rid of lots of the negotiation. We also know that while our staff were amazing in terms of their ability to reach out and support kids throughout the spring and remote learning, and have been over the summer, and we want to be far more intentional in having teachers own the success of a smaller group of students so that we can be, you know, if it's everyone's job, it's no one's job. And so, we really want to narrow that down so that we know who teachers can really be accountable for. And then we also know that we want to have live instruction and not just office hours and drop-in sessions. So, you can see that our basic template for the daily schedule is that our teacher workday is essentially the same. Our teachers will begin their day at eight o'clock. For the first 45 minutes of the day, that will be an open session. They'll be able to use that for student conferences or for collaborating with their peers, for prepping, for getting ready for the day. We will run, the student day will really begin at eight forty-five in what we are calling learning squads or home rooms, but those will also expand to a particular class. Students will be engaged in four class sessions every day between nine and one o'clock. One o'clock will break for lunch, and then from one thirty to three o'clock, we will have open office hours where teachers will be able to work with small groups of students in workshops and building background knowledge, or conferencing with individual students as well. We, in order to limit the amount of screen time and transitions during the day, our teacher leaders were very strong around limiting how many sessions kids have. And so, we'll be doing an A/B day rotation. Students will be taking their, the first four of their classes on A-Day, and then they'll be taking the second three classes plus an extended squad period for us to provide technical and social-emotional learning and community-building support to kids every day. As Val mentioned, we will, you know, the bulk of our teaching will be through live instruction. We're working on a basic template to which all teachers will subscribe in terms of how much time is teacher-directed and how much is independent group or individual work the kids are doing within the class period. And then finally, Al Gates and Lori Dennis and their team on the Dean Campus, it is really hard to do vocational education remotely. And so, we are, we've put together a plan where by grade level, students will have the option to come one day a week onto the Dean Campus and on that day, work entirely with their shop teachers. And we are, you know, working out that will have some cascading impact on the academic schedule for our students on the Dean Campus. But Al, Lori, their teacher leaders and I are working that out, and we're confident that's in the best interest of our kids. So, that's, that's what we're looking for. If you may, the Opportunity Academy, in particular, our Success Center, is exploring whether or not we want to add live on-campus instruction as an option for those students as well. And we're looking to have a proposal to bring to Dr. Vasquez later this week. So, that's where we are. And I think I'm handing English learners off to Val? Yeah. So, back to you, Val.
Hi. So, for our English learners, we know that most will be engaged in remote learning with their grade-level peers through their core content classes and additional support provided by their ESL teachers. For our in-person small group, we are targeting newcomers who are students who are new to mainland US within the last two years and/or have some, are new to English-dominated instructional schooling. And so, that's who we're targeting for these groups. And we have staff currently pulling that information, so we can provide them the most support that they, that they need. Our target start date for the high school programming, Dr. Mahoney just mentioned, is the fourteenth. The K through eight programming, our target start date for the in-person sessions is September twenty-first. Like Dr. Mahoney and our high school students, we would run a four-day in-person session. And it would be Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Wednesday would be synchronous support through, remote synchronous support with ESL teachers. In addition to the scheduling changes I spoke to you earlier about for the pre-K to eight buildings would allow the students to continue to participate in the content instruction. It's extremely important that they're included in their content learning with their peers, in addition to receiving the targeted supports in language acquisition. So, we wanted to make sure that we give both, and we're not replacing anything that our students need. Families will be contacted by August twenty-fourth. And we plan to do that individually. We're currently collecting data, and we will have information on who's eligible for the newcomers in-person learning. And we will cross-reference that with the family surveys that went out. And then we will make phone calls to all of the students' families to determine who would like to opt into the in-person learning and who would prefer to remain fully remote. Both options are available and will receive support through our ESL staff in collaboration with core content teachers. And I believe I am turning it over to Mary Ann, who can give you a little bit of information regarding the special education Cohort C group.
Great. Thank you, Val. Like my colleagues have said, this has really been a team effort with the leadership of Dr. Vasquez Matos and, you know, really the work with all of our departments coming together to try to plan as thoughtfully and effectively as we can to meet the needs of our students. So, like our EL students, remote learning will be, will be in place for most of our students with disabilities. Like Val mentioned, it will be a combination of both synchronous and asynchronous learning. We really want to highlight the fact that related services will be provided, speech, OTPT. Again, to start for most students, that would be done virtually, with the hopes that we will be able to expand in-person learning and have more students be able to come in on-site to our schools. Families will receive consultation from service providers, as well as any students that receive paraprofessional support during the school year would be able to continue to receive paraprofessional support. And we're going to be doing training with all of our paraprofessionals. Actually, on this platform, on the Zoom platform that we're using for this meeting tonight, there's the feature that we're currently using right now for interpretation is a function that we are going to be able to use with our paraprofessionals, so that much like anybody out there right now that's receiving interpretation through this platform, we could have a paraprofessional work with a student, receiving support, receiving guidance, while they're still part of the main lesson that's going on with their classmates. So, that's some training that we're doing with all of our paraprofessionals, so that that can be in place for the school year. We'll also be continuing to provide support materials for students and ensuring that we're collecting data and monitoring student progress every step of the way so that we can ensure a smooth transition when we're able to transition into a hybrid model. I can go to our next slide. What we've talked about quite a bit already, my colleagues, in looking at what in-person learning will look like. Again, since we are, we're starting off in remote learning, we are looking at our students that are really the highest need categories to start with our in-person learning. For special education, that means students that are currently receiving services in out-of-district schools, our students that are in our Transitions Academy, which those of you that are watching, our student presentation, Gio, is our, one of our students at the Transition Academy, our substantially separate programs for grades K through twelve. And then our second phase of in-person learning will include our pre-K programs, including pre-K programs that are substantially separate. Our hope is that we will be able to include more students, like Dr. Vasquez Matos mentioned earlier, more students into in-person learning as we move into a hybrid model from our remote model. Like the EL department, we are contacting families. We are working very closely with the family engagement team. Personal phone calls are being made to all of those families of students that would qualify for in-person learning to begin the school year. Our timeline is very similar. We are looking at starting in-person learning for September fourteenth for our high school students, as well as our students in the Transitions Academy and students that are in out-of-district placements, and then gradually phase in more schools the week after, and then again the week after that. We're going to reiterate to families that it is still a choice. Our families are able to continue to choose full remote learning. And so, then we will know exactly who we're, we are programming for. We're working very closely with human resources, as well as school principals, determined staffing, based on the number of students, families that are choosing in-person learning. And we are ensuring, working with our facilities department, to make sure that all of the equipment is fully in place for our students that are starting in-person on the fourteenth.
Mary Ann, I'm sorry. I guess you're going a little bit too fast for the translator.
I am so sorry. My, and they're my team, and I know I'm a fast talker, so I apologize to my fabulous.
That's okay. Thank you.
So, that is our process for, for starting up with in-person learning. Again, we will be looking at expanding as, as the year goes on. And, and I know, if we can go to the next slide, I am not positive who. I am turning it back over. Val, you're back up again. I should have really talked a lot slower to give you a little bit more time. But Val, you're back up for professional development.
Thanks, Mary Ann. That's okay. And you know what? I'm probably equally to blame about making it hard for our translator. So, I will try to think about that as I'm speaking with you right now. So, let's talk about professional development a little bit. Our staff, first of all, our focus is on providing equitable practices, defining what success looks like within the core instructional block and in a virtual environment. And also, for those staff who will be teaching live and in-person, upfront would be safety procedures and protocol training for them. Obviously, that training will happen when we do transition to hybrid or in-person learning for all staff. But this is our current focus right now. The schedule is that all of our content instruction and ESL, I'm sorry, ESL's included in that, SEL will occur the week of the twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth. We have special education content sessions. We have all of the academic content sessions with social-emotional learning and sessions for our counselors as well. There is, we just pushed out a thirty-two-page catalog to our principals for review, and it'll go live to staff tomorrow morning by ten AM, and they'll begin to select the sessions that they're going to attend. All of these sessions are provided to them through the lens of how do we provide strong instructional, strong instructional support for our students, and so that we can accelerate learning. But the context is how do we meet students' individual and collective needs based on our current circumstances? What are virtual best practices that we could be using to engage students? And so, that last statement also indicates one of our, one of our focus points for PD. And that is what are those best practices to engage students and support them? How do we build strong community when we're virtual? How do we engage students in high-quality learning through a virtually or a blended model? And so, that is the focus of the week, the second week of professional learning, which happens August thirty-first through September third. Our school-based professional development will continue to build off of those PD sessions. They will continue to go over school-specific safety procedural training, as well as professional development that is related to the school improvement plan and instructional priorities. All, again, that tie into the overarching district priorities. We are also providing increased professional development and collaboration time. And so, this is one of the things that we refined with, in collaboration with the principals as, as late as this afternoon. Two times a month, there will be a two-hour window on Wednesdays that is consistent across all buildings, that the district will provide professional, or ongoing professional learning opportunities once a month during that time. Some of it will, it'll be a combination of self-paced learning along with facilitated live Zoom session learning. The other, once a month, district facilitated day will, a month on Wednesdays, will be used for staff to have job-alike collaboration across the district. This is something that our staff have asked for, for a couple of years now. And we need it even more, even more now than we have in the past, given how much there's going to be shifting and planning needs. And so, we want to provide increased opportunity for professional collaboration and instructional planning. And so, once a month for two hours, third grade, if I'm a third-grade teacher at Morgan, I'll be able to collaborate with all of my other third-grade colleagues from across the district once a month on our planning and collaboration day. There will be the two days a month on Wednesdays as well. There will be, the two days a month on Wednesdays as well, are two time, yes, two days a month on Wednesdays, where I can collaborate in my own building with my colleagues or have just additional planning time for myself. This is in addition to the school-based professional development calendars that are in place. Because again, we know that our staff are going to need more planning time in order to provide the best instruction they can for our students. And you can also see the school calendar shifts here, that our first day of school is the 14th for grades 1 through 12, that our pre-K and K will start on the 21st. And that we have, and we've already spoken to you about the staggered start times for cohort C. So I think you've heard me enough, unless there's questions later. So I'm going to turn it over to Anthony, so he can give you some information on technology rollout.
Before anything, I just want to check in with everyone, just to see if there's any questions. I know I see Ms. Brunel's hand raised. Ms. Brunel, did you want to ask your question now? Or did you want to wait through the whole presentation to finish?
Um, if I could ask questions now, because they're not related to what we haven't gotten to yet, if that's okay?
Great, go ahead.
Okay. So my first question, and I think might end up being for Mary Ann, but I'm not sure. So I had a parent reach out to me, so I'm going to keep it very broad and general. But if we have a parent who has two children in Hoyok Public Schools, both on IEPs, but not quite at the level where you guys say they can do in-person, but the parent's also an essential worker, so they're getting provided childcare to our community partners now, and is at her wits' end, there's like, at what level of students with disabilities can this parent, or any parent, try to opt in? Like what avenues can they go? Who can they call? Who can they talk to to ensure? Even if their kids can get put in the next session of, say, childcare at the Boys and Girls Club, or wherever it may be, is Hoyok Public Schools going to have some staff there to help these children with the remote learning who so dismally failed at it, say, in the spring because of the IEP needs? So that's my first question.
So then had a lot of parts, so I can, I can, I can start off and, and I may have others jump in. But right now, we're working with, right, this remote model, where we are limited in the amount of students that we can bring back to in-person learning, right? And this is not easy. We know that a number of our students did not perform well in remote learning, which is why we are working so diligently with all of our teams together to improve what that looks like, to improve access for students, to have more synchronous learning, so that students are engaged with their teachers, with their service providers, with their paraprofessional staff to be able to assist them. So I wish, I wish I could sit here today and say that, you know, everybody that would want to take part in in-person learning could. Unfortunately, that's not the point that we're at right now. So you have to pick and choose. So, you know, we really work together as an administrative team to determine which students we are able to feasibly start with for in-person learning and how we then go about developing a system to determine how we can phase in more students, have more ability for families to opt in to those services. And I'm trying really hard to slow down, because I know that this is a challenge for my translation team. So we have set up weekly meetings with the Board of Health so that we can be on top of the most recent, up-to-date metrics to be able to determine when we can move from our very small groups of in-person learning to then be able to branch out to, you know, more in-person learning opportunities for our students. It will also give us the ability to make those, you know, really nimble shifts as we introduce more groups each week to see what's working and what can we improve upon. That's what worked for us this summer. When we had in-person groups, that any staff that are, that were working in my transitions program will tell you, we got better and better and better as each week went on. So that we know that we will be able to do that as we start our schools back up in September. I'm intrigued at your comment, and it's, it's one that I have to say has not come up. So I can pledge that I will bring that back to our leadership team. But I have to say that that's the first time somebody has talked about, is there a way that we could potentially provide some staffing to our partners that are, you know, providing that very valuable resource to family for childcare? So I'm definitely intrigued in that. And, and my mind is kind of racing, sitting here, to think about how we could better support our families who have children that are going to be, you know, working with or in care of some of our partner programs. So I can't speak to that tonight, but, but I can promise you that that's something that I would bring back to, to our team, for sure.
I can, I can add to that as well, Mary Ann. So, so the answer to the question about the partners, so the partners are, in my meeting last week with them, they're under ready to see what type of supports they can provide based on space and staffing that they might have. So they have received also the plan, but this is a unique ask. But I think, but the other thing that we also have to consider and think about is that we also have to worry about our own internal staffing and make sure that the teachers that we actually begin conversations with are comfortable also teaching and coming back into buildings to teach to small groups. So that's the first group that we're actually having conversation. And we have had, you know, teachers and parents have reached out and said, yes, I want to come back to, to help. So that's why we started with this kind of small cohort of students. Because if we were to go to, let's say, a hybrid or, or a larger group of students, we would require more staffing. That does not mean that the staffing is going to be able, based on many circumstances, whether medically or feeling safe, to come back to school or because the data is not favorable to us of opening larger groups. So there are, there are a lot of variables that are being at play here. So we ask parents to be patient. There is no right solution right now. We can't, you know, we can't make everyone happy, right? So we, we go back to kind of when we approached the hybrid. We listened, this is, this is now a way to start. But if you can see in our, in our, in our talking points, one of the things that we do want to do is eventually expand as the data gets better for us. And, and we're going to look at the data on a weekly basis, on a monthly basis, and, and see how can we increase, whether it's by the, the, our special needs, our special needs students, or is that that we introduce one grade district-wide? Whatever that might be, we're going to be monitoring that. But if parents do have questions, they should be contacting our offices directly and we can kind of walk them through scenarios and kind of find some type of solutions to, to address their concerns. But there is not one perfect plan out there right now. And I think that's one thing that the community willingness to understand that this, we would want all our kids to come back. Teachers want all our kids to come back. But we're looking at the data, we're making sure we'll be responsible, we're making sure that we're doing things safely. But we're also making sure that we serve our highest needs students, at least to start somewhere where we know that remote is not going to be the best situation for them.
All right. Thank you all for that. I have two other things. In the slide with synchronous and asynchronous, I'd be curious to see when that gets updated and what those numbers will look like. As a parent myself, I do think, I know screen time is a concern, but this is not video game screen time. And in my parent's opinion, I would feel much more comfortable and much more at ease if the more in-person, live, on-screen, I think the better. So that's just my perspective as a parent and a school committee member. As far as Google Classroom goes, if we're going to be using that for actual classroom work, we need to make sure that the documents are editable and easy for the students to, to work with. I know, obviously, spring, you know, no one planned for that, and it was very hard for everybody involved. But, you know, it was hard to say, have to teach them how to drag and drop a text box, or something was expected to be circled and you couldn't circle. I just have that quick comment on Google Classroom. And then, you know, I see a lot of emphasis in here in our English language learners, which I think is wonderful and very important. But I think we need to also keep in mind about our dual-language learners. You know, we've increasingly expanding that program. So, you know, MedCath, obviously now up to sixth grade. We've got Ian White, we've got Kelly coming online. So maybe there could be some like dual-language-wide, like hour, once or twice a week, where everybody gets on and just does some great activity in Spanish. Or there's just, I want to see extra supports for that, because, you know, we want to graduate these kids bilingual. And I'm, I'm just, you know, we've lost, I know everyone's lost so much time in all content areas. But, you know, we need to keep in mind that we have a big cohort of our, of our student base trying to learn a second language as well. So just keeping that in mind, I don't know if it's going to be covered, but that we have some extra support, maybe like I said, once a week or twice a week, where all the dual-language kids can zoom in and, I don't know, do something or some kind of extra supports for the dual-language learners. Thanks.
So if I could respond to that, you're, you're very right, Erin, that we have to make sure, and I should have had more talking points for dual-language. We are developing the split, the synchronous-asynchronous split. And to your point, we're not looking to go much below a 50-50 split. So we have a certain amount of hours that are going to be a student day. We will say what amount of that time is asynchronous versus synchronous, and they will have plenty of in-person learning. Everything I mentioned around what that structure should look like absolutely applies to dual-language. And so one of the things that I've asked, that has been asked for and that I will provide to principals by the end of this week, is a sample student schedule in what our, what we're saying the student day looks like. And one of the examples will be dual-language specific. We have a dual-language curriculum committee team, re-entry planning team, that has been working on taking all of this information. And so they are in the plan, but they should have been more explicitly outlined. And so my apologies for that, but just do know, whenever we say our student learning plan, we are including all programming, and particularly our dual-language. And so I just want to make, make sure that that's clear. And thank you very much for bringing up those questions.
Question?
Oh, hold on, Rosalie. I saw that you do have a question. You came in after Mr. Shan. So once Mr. Shan asks his questions, you're next in the queue, and then I have someone else. But I'll get to you, Ms. Rosalie, okay?
Sure, okay.
Mr. Shan?
So I just have a question regarding the calendar. I was looking at the link on the website that was provided. I don't understand, it says, "Calendar includes five pupil school days for inclement weather. Schools will close after they have been in session for 174 pupil school days." Isn't it 170?
No, it's, it's 170, Mr. Shan. That was my quick editing with very bleary eyes. And so it is 170. The start and end dates do add up to 170. That one box on the bottom needs to be corrected, along with September. Still says 17 days in the, up in the corner, and it should say 13. So I have the corrections on my computer, I just haven't hit send, because we've been in, in different sessions all morning. So that will be corrected for tomorrow.
Okay, I just wanted to, to double-check on that.
Yes, that's, that's a Val and Mir mistake, and not necessarily an HPS mistake.
Before I started counting, and I.
Yeah, don't count. You're good.
Give some thought to the, to the receiver. And maybe as we talked about the past few months, that we are a culture-inclusive district and that we are committed to social justice and committed to, into openness and discussions and dialogue, that we, we look at October 12th and look at possibly using the term of Indigenous Peoples' Days rather than Columbus Day as we move forward. But I, that's not a discussion for tonight, I don't think. But I think that's a discussion as we have many discussions.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Shan. Next is Ms. Tensley-Williams.
Yes, ma'am. I'm not sure who to direct my two questions to. But the situation with the four, when the kids go for four days in-person, will the ventilation situation be squared away? And also as far as the breakfast and lunch, how is that going to be served?
So the ventilation, we will, we are trying to be very strategic around making sure we use the most well-ventilated air. Because they're smaller groups, they will be, you know, put into rooms that actually have the most, best ventilation ACs. And because we have on these additional, because we're not going hybrid and we have some additional air purifiers that we can relocate and strategically put in classrooms, we will be doing that as well, to making sure that we accommodate the needs of the sites. Until we get an accurate enrollment count, we'll be able to better determine logistically and working with the principals, where these students will be in the school buildings. As it relates, I'm sorry.
As far as the breakfast is concerned, how will you serve that and also the lunch? Because they will be in-person.
So that also depends on the, the grade band. So for example, if in the high schools, there's going to be certain parts of the day, but if they're, to pick, to pick up their lunch and eat at, in the classroom spaces as required by the guidance. But there are also, for example, as Dr. Mahoney mentioned, if some of the students who are coming from the Dean Campus who are just going to come in to do kind of their workshop, will finish the day, half-day, and do a grab-and-go, which means they'll pick up their lunch and go home. And then we will, at the local, at the, at the middle school and high schools, wherever these students sat, they will have, be eating lunch in their, in their rooms or an open, a more open area in the school, depending on the logistics of the building.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Tensley-Williams. I don't have anybody else with any comment or discussion. So Mr. Soto, I guess, was the one that was up next.
Yeah, thank you. So I just wanted to go over a few slides with what our technology resources are going to be and what our technology distribution plan is going to be. It's a, it's a huge undertaking, what, what we're trying to accomplish here in getting a device out to every single student. So it's going to be a team effort, a collaborative effort, a collaborative effort with all of the schools. Some of the resources that we'll be offering to all of our staffing, or all of our staff is going to be the Google Suite. So that includes Google Classroom, Google Meets, Chat, Drive, Sheets, Slides, all the standard Google Suite functions. We'll also have Clever for all of our teachers and students, and that's just a way for, for students to easily access some of the digital learning platforms that we have. We have upgraded our Zoom. We're currently in the process of, of finalizing that contract with the city. But it's going to allow us better functionality with Zoom. We got the premium version for all of our staff. So that'll allow, and that's going to be free to all of the staff members as well. And then, as Val mentioned earlier, we're going to be looking at Seesaw and implementing Seesaw for grades pre-K to 2, and Google Classroom for grades 3 to 12. For hardware, we're looking at Chromebooks for every student in grades 3 to 12. As, as many of you know, we've already distributed in April and May and June, we distributed over 1,700 Chromebooks. So we're going to be continuing to distribute and getting started with that process fairly soon. Our, our pre-K to 2, we've ordered iPads for. So we just ordered over 1,600 iPads in collaboration with, with the state and the digital learning grant that was offered. We were able to place our order. That is a pending delivery right now. We don't have delivery estimates yet. So, but from when we delivered it last week, they were talking about five to six weeks. So that is something we're talking to our, you know, our academic team and our school leaders that the likelihood of, of having those iPads ready in grades pre-K to 2 for the first day of school is. is, is not very likely. We're, you know, we're, we're hoping that that's the case, but we're asking schools to plan um around that and, you know, for families that you know, for, for the distribution of those iPads, um, we, we can do something temporarily for the families that need, need the I, the um devices, um hand them out with the uh intention that when we do get the iPads in um that we can swap out the Chromebooks that currently are out there for, for grades pre-K to two or ones that we give them throughout the distribution process. I'm, I'm happy to say that we've already started distributing a lot of our brand new laptops for teachers. We've, we've, we've um distributed over three hundred over the course of the last week. Um, so all teaching staff are going to have brand new laptops um that we just got in a few weeks ago. And then, you know, all, all the administrators and, and paraprofessionals and support staff that are going to be involved with the uh digital learning and remote learning are also going to be getting some sort of device. Uh, most of them already have that. Next slide, please. Um, as far as the distribution goes, as I mentioned um before, uh, but uh we already started the teachers. Um, we are going to be working with, with principals and, and, and putting together teams. I'm, I'm going to be reviewing a communication that should be going out um by the end of this week. Um, to, for, for schools to start putting teams together. We have a technology team of about four technicians. And we're trying to distribute, you know, um five thousand devices or, or four thousand devices. Um, that's going to be a monumental task and we want to, we want families to be able to go to their school and pick up the devices. So um, we're going to be working with school teams. Each building has a, a technology lead. Um, that position right now is, is currently posted. It's usually occupied by a teacher in the building. Um, that is more comfortable with, with technology and helping other teachers. So they'll be heavily involved with that process. I mean, we're going to be involving our facilities team in that process as well. Um, so it's going to be an all hands on deck approach. We want to get as many devices out to families as possible. Um, can we move to the next slide, please? Um, so that's, that's really it for, for our technology. Um, and I'm going to, I believe I'm going to hand this over to Erin, who's going to go through some of the health metrics.
Hi, everybody. So great to see you. Thank you for having me. Um, as you know, DESI released um health metrics last week. So these are um kind of set it, these are guideposts to help districts and municipalities make decisions around what the school condition should be. Although the metrics will be available every Wednesday, districts should be looking at these over the course of a couple of weeks or a few weeks because you don't want to make drastic changes to your learning plan based on one week of information. So you're really looking for trends over time. The most important metric that they highlighted is a color-coded metric. It's the number of daily COVID nineteen cases per one hundred thousand residents over a two-week period. Um, so when the metric first came out, Holyoke was in the yellow, around seven cases per a hundred thousand residents. On August twelfth, we moved, we just moved into the red with nine cases per one hundred thousand residents. Obviously, we don't have a hundred thousand residents. So this was, this is closer to really like four cases in Holyoke per day over a two-week period. Um, the thresholds that DESI released were that you are green, which is, you're good to go for in-person instruction for for everybody with safety precautions. If you're at four or under, you are yellow if you're between four and eight and you move into the red ca- category at eight and above. It isn't, I think it's interesting also to note that Harvard's Global Health Institute actually came out this um in the past week with a recommendation that red's not really um till twenty-five. So I'm not sure if we're going to see that change at all, but for now it's the eight. So Holyoke just made it over. It's also important to note that Holyoke kind of made it over that threshold due to some um cases in some long-term care facilities. So it's really important that we meet every week after this report goes out with the Board of Health. Um, Sean Gonstleit has been terrific for us to work with because we need to know kind of the with the context behind the numbers if we're going to make um informed decisions for our learners. And the second, the second piece to also look at would be test positivity rate over a two-week period. So this is the percent of positive COVID tests out of all COVID tests. As of August twelfth, Holyoke was two point three nine percent. This is below, um, this is within the range where they would recommend that it's safer school. Harvard's Global Health Institute recommends less than three percent. And the CDC and WHO who recommend less than five percent. So Holyoke is looking favorably on that metric. And then the other piece that DESI advised us on is really where you're seeing an upward or downward trend in cases. Last week we had an upward trend. Um, the week prior, we had a downward trend. So as I mentioned, um, we're going to be using these metrics over time to do, make sure that our learning model is a good fit with the health environment. Um, we are going, we are hopeful that over time we can bring more students back for in-person learning. I think it's notable that on the family survey that was administered from about August sixth to the twelfth, forty-four percent of families did want some form of in-person instruction. So like to Ms. Brunell's question, um earlier on in the meeting, there is demand for in-person instruction um when it's safe to do so. Um, we will evaluate the learning model um by each term. So that's for quarters for middle and high school and by trimesters for elementary school to see if we need to make changes to the learning model. Um, we will aim to make a decision about the next term about three weeks in advance. Because we need to make sure that we have time to move between um learning models if the health environment indicates it's safe to do so. But when we talk about this cohort C or this smaller group of students that are coming into school more regularly, we want to be able to pivot and make adjustments on a monthly basis. So obviously we're doing all that we can and the communities um need to do all that um we can, we all can do together to try to bring students back. Um, so we'll be evaluating that on a month basis and perhaps there might be another cohort of students such as the Opportunity Academy students um that we could bring back um for more in-person instruction. Um, in any of these scenarios though, even if Holyoke does change to hybrid or in-person instruction at some point, families will still have the option to remain in remote learning throughout school year twenty twenty-one. So it's really important for families um and, and everyone here to understand that um you can continue to choose remote learning for the um full school year twenty twenty-one. Um, so I'll pass it back to Dr. V. Thank you so much for listening.
So as you can see, the, the team has been working very hard. Uh, we have been working very hard and making sure that we um are prepared um to open school and, and any remote, but as well as also taking into consideration our students for cohort C who um will need additional um support in order to be engaged, um be successful and have a, a, an ex- a, a great experience um in their learning opportunity and learning model. So I will stop there and, and, and um if there's any more questions.
Yeah, we, we do have a couple more, uh Ms. Burks.
So I just had a quick question in regards to the numbers and how that's going to change. I saw that the CDC just came out and said that the case number in children is actually rising. Um, my guess is because they were the population that weren't being tested when COVID originally started and we just started testing kids. Um, so I am a little concerned about some of the comments thrown out by way of children testing um and what the numbers actually look like. You know, the state and everybody is saying that Holyoke's in the red. Um, I, I just don't want to give people a false hope um in making it seem like we are safer than we actually are. Um, that's a little concerning to me and I want to be really clear. You know, what the CDC is now coming out with and saying with children being at high risk, that's important information that needs to be added um because they're really pushing on it and kids weren't tested and they are now being tested. Um, so that data is going to change constantly. Um, so I just want to be really mindful about what we're putting out there um when it comes to that data. So that's, that's my biggest comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was, was there a question? I'm sorry Rebecca, on that one or, or no, it was just a statement?
You know, I, I just don't know, because when the CDC and the WHO was brought up um as being a citing for the information, um it more concerned me that the CDC is now stating that the children are at higher risk, but it's because we're testing them now. We weren't previously. So when we're citing data and information, it needs to be real time. I know that information changes constantly. I work in the field. I get it. I see it every day. Um, in regards to the information changing, but I just, you know, that's a huge thing for us when we're talking about school and education. The CDC coming forth with that kind of information about kids is really important information that should be shared. Um, so if we're citing, we need to cite the most up-to-date information and that's the most up-to-date. So it was a question slash comment.
So I, so I, I can, so, and that's a fair, that's a, that's a fair uh comment slash question. And, and so I, as you stated, um Ms. Burks, the information comes weekly, even daily, like every twenty-four hours is a new study coming from different organizations. Um, to, to Mary, as part of Marion's uh curious presentation, one of the things, because there's so much um information um being released on a weekly and, and even daily basis, that's why we decided to have the standing weekly meeting with the City Department of Health to have the, you know, health experts talk to the data and give us more detail behind the data. So for, so while we know that um Holyoke i- is now in this quote, quote, red, what we do know, a lot of the cases are because are connected to long-term uh facilities and not a youth. That doesn't mean that next week is going to be a different story, right? Because we're seeing, we're seeing the South and we're seeing schools close. Um, and, and there's more cases in, in, in youth. And so so we want to make sure that um we can actually take a deep dive into data to tell a story and make, and, and make informed decisions. So, but again, the entire plan allows us to pivot and in any direction, whether we have to make the decision of make, making sure that that because the cases are, are increasing and are not safe for our students, that we might have to go completely remote. Um, which includes COVID.
Gotcha. Is that your bulldog snoring?
And you hear it? I am so sorry.
Devin thought it was mine. So thank you for taking that. Um, no, but I will say.
I think you jinxed yourself earlier today, Dr. V, because I had never heard it until today.
This is the ultimate school committee bulldog. I mean, everybody's a bulldog lover, so it's all good. Um, but on a, on a funny side note, like Target closed today because they have COVID cases. So you know, our, our own local Target's closed now. So that's just another side note um to be cautious. So that's all.
And before I get to the next um uh school committee member, I just want to give a clarification as well, Ms. Burks. Um, in regards to numbers and testing, one of the biggest issues that's going around right now is the fact that all, especially with the healthcare systems having to test weekly. Um, we were just notified that now we have to actually get the address of the individual that we're testing, even though they work for our company and were located in Holyoke. All of our numbers were accounting for the city of Holyoke, but the individuals were not living in Holyoke. And so now to get it more accurate as to which ones are from Holyoke, which ones live in Chicopee, we're getting the, the addresses for each individual. So about a hundred and eighty employees to two hundred employees. And so that way their numbers go to their towns and it might even help out our numbers or they can even hurt our numbers. I mean, but it'll be more accurate in respects to reporting. So the next one was Mr. Wellahan.
Thank you very much. Um, just a couple of quick questions. I don't know if um Mr., Mr. Soto can answer or not. Uh, just on how many new uh employees you had to hire um for the district? Um, specifically, um have you had to hire anyone uh to like um report the new um um COVID stats to the state? Um, it seems like, it seems like um there's a lot of reporting that's required ongoing and currently. So um, that's my first question. And um maybe like uh have we had any new employees hired for the um to have our uh technology improvements advanced um throughout the district? Um, in terms of getting the uh technology for our students? Thank you.
Yeah, so we are, we hire many new employees um every year. New teachers, um new paraprofessionals. But as far as um new employees that to, to provide any statistics, we haven't had any um, you know, we, we have the capacity in our nursing department and amongst our cabinet team to be able to to, you know, to, to keep an eye on what the statistics are. Um, as far as technology goes, unfortunately, you know, our, our budget this, this upcoming year was a very challenging one. Um, and you know, what we did, put forward a plan, a, a instructional technology plan that called for um some instructional technology coaches, but um due to the fact that we were, we were looking at a, a significant um deficit uh during the budget development process, we weren't able to add those positions. Um, we will, I'll continue to work with Dr. V. Um, and you know, now that we're definitely going to this remote model, I, I, I feel strongly that those positions are necessary. We have a very lean technology department. And our technology, our entire technology department has been focused around the infrastructure and around the um you know, making sure that the internet's working, that our network is constantly uh maintained. So um, and that um break fix technology, so our help desk, um, we, our, our entire technology department was built around that process functioning. Um, taking our technology department to the next level would be, you know, um adding the instructional technology component, which right now we don't have the, the staff in the department to do that. But as I said, you know, I'll, I'll continue to to discuss with, with Dr. Dr. V and with the academic team. And if there's ever an opportunity to add more positions, because we know now more than ever with, with the amount of devices that we're going to be providing students and the support that our students and our families are going to need and our staff are going to need has increased significantly compared to what we've, what we've had in the past. So um, that's a great question and, and I hope that I answered it.
Good. Thank you, Mrs. Soto.
Thank you, Mr. Wellahan. I'm Mr. Sheen.
Yeah, um, this is probably something I should have asked before um to either Dr. Mahoney or Mrs. Anir. Um, but you were talking about the scheduling at the high school with the A days and the, the B days. Um, with that, are any of the dual enrollment classes um synchronous learning where there would be issues with being in a dual enrollment course and also having your high school class schedule at the same time?
That's a great question, Devin. Um, we um uh uh for a, a number of reasons, um with the HCC early college uh program that we have this year for our juniors, um we went with a cohort model of classes. Um, and uh those uh, those classes were scheduled uh for end of day. And so uh for our juniors who are in the HCC, which is eighty-plus students, um that there, there should be no, uh, no conflict uh based on our nine to one o'clock schedule. For our sophomores who are entering that program, um, as, as you all may remember, for the first semester, um their uh program is, is a school-based avid class. It's taught by one of our staff members. And then, um, and then uh they will join a class second semester. Um, and so we're working with
And so we're working with HCC to, to plan for that. If we continue in, in either remote or hybrid fashion for second semester. For our Westfield Promise students, we'll continue to work with, with them. They, they blocked off the first two periods of their school day. Because generally speaking, they've been traveling onto the campus. And so we've got, we've got plenty of room in their schedules to, to manage the coordination with our Westfield colleagues. For seniors who are at HCC, we're facing the same thing that we, that we typically face, which is they work with their school counselors to make sure that the classes they enroll in at HCC fit into the time blocks that we have on, on our campus. And, uh, our, our school counselors are doubling back now that we've made the decision to go full remote. To make sure that, that if there are any conflicts, to figure out those conflicts and, and either change the schedule that they have here for Holyoke High School or change their enrollment at HCC and look to get another class that fits the pathway that they, um, that they've identified for their pursuit through early college.
So, yeah. Nope, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Nope, I, I was just going to try to finish it with a little bang, but you know, go ahead, ask your follow-up.
I'm sorry, I, I interrupted your.
No worries.
There. Um, so HCC I know is, is fully remote, but I know that Westfield is doing a, an in-person, a hybrid and a remote synchronous and then an online program. And they're whatnot starting till the end of September, I think now. How is that impacting our programming?
It, it shouldn't impact. It will be doing our Westfield Promise classes remotely. Alyssa Maldonado and Kevin Bichard are our link teachers for both the English and the history course that we offer to our juniors that's linked. Uh, and then our seniors will simply take their course synchronously through Westfield State. And, and that'll be through the first semester. If that changes second semester, we'll work with Westfield State on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then.
I, I would just, my, my bang there Devin is like, we've got really great partners at both Westfield State and HCC. They've been very proactive in working with the staff at the high school and, and we're really grateful. And I just publicly, I want to acknowledge the staff at Westfield State and HCC. They've been wonderful partners throughout both the spring shutdown and, and planning for the fall.
Yeah. And the only other thing I, maybe, the only thing for you I have is regarding exploratory. How is that going to work?
Well, it's a great question. Again, one, you know, Alan and Lori and their team really advocated for having a, a day for all of our Dean students to be on campus. So when freshmen are on the campus on their day, they'll be, they'll be doing the exploratory program. You know, as, as best as we're able to adjust to it under the circumstances. But it, it, you know, typically in a, in a live week, freshmen and sophomores would have somewhere between eight to 10 hours in exploratory. What we'll have now is four hours of live on campus. And then they'll be, we'll be doing exploratory via remote. And, you know, as best as we can and, and doing lots of the related classroom and curriculum and safety protocols. And, you know, our teachers are being creative with using, you know, using video and using guest speakers to help out with that as well.
And then I assume for everyone, and this might be something for Mr. Soto. For all the people that are going to be in class or in school, we're providing transportation for that meet those eligibility guidelines or?
For the ones that meet the eligibility criteria, yeah. I mean, um, a lot of our, a, a lot of the students in Cohort C would qualify due to the, um, you know, having transportation in their IEP. But, um, so, so yeah, we'll follow our normal guidelines and then make sure that, that we can provide it safely, given the, the guidance that Desi put forward a few weeks ago as well.
Yeah, I guess I just think about the, uh, the students that are at Dean that are doing, uh, actually in the CBT program that would possibly qualify for transportation, that they would get that, uh, that service for them. Uh, and then I guess just as far as food. I know there's probably many unanswered questions as far as food service. But has there been any type of final decisions on, um, distribution sites and those types of things yet? Or are we still waiting?
Yeah, we, um, our plan is to, you know, the reason why we selected the sites, the six sites that we selected was because of their, you know, how spread out throughout the city they were. And, um, and, and to make sure that, you know, our neediest families had access to, to the meals. So our plan currently right now is to distribute on Monday, Wednesday and Friday. Same times, it's, it's what, what our families have been used to throughout the closure period at the same site. So we're talking Sullivan, um, Sullivan, Dunahue, uh, Holyoke High, Morgan, Lawrence and Kelly. We plan on, on deliver, uh, on having meals available at those sites, Monday, Wednesday and Friday. And in addition to that, for any students that are in person, any students in Cohort C will make sure that there's meals provided while they're, while they are in person as well.
And there'll be no interruption, I assume, in the distribution with like, what, would this be this transition from like now until September 14th, right? Or it's just staying?
Yeah, we plan on, on providing our summer feeding program all the way up until school starts, if, if that's what you were asking.
That's, yeah, that's what I'm asking. I mean, that's.
What will change is when school starts, we go from a summer feeding program to a regular feeding program. And the accountability is, is, is a lot more stringent and, and, you know, we have to actually tie the meal to the student. So I'll give you an example. Right now, someone can show up at, at Lawrence School and, you know, say they have five students and they're going to get meals for five kids. We don't ask what name, what school, what grade. Um, and they're on their way, um, but, and, and we give them the meals. When, when we start school, the Desi is requiring us to go back to what we do during the normal course of the feeding program, which is tie the meal to the student. So we're working right now to come up with an easy accountability system. It will likely include, you know, um, either, either IDs, photoless IDs that just have the student's ID number on them where a family can come and present that ID. The, the accountability will be held, will be handled at the school. We'll have a point of service. Machine, we're working on getting, um, wireless scanners right now so that we can just scan that ID. It'll be contactless, easy. It's not something that we have in place right now. Everything's hardwired. So when kids go to the cafeteria. But we are exploring getting that so that it, it just, it's just a safer way to distribute. And it, it makes the accountability a lot quicker. As opposed to, you know, sitting there asking a bunch of questions, who's a student, what school, what grade? Blah, 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 finding them in school brains and then logging it. That, that could be time consuming. So we're working through those logistics now.
Yeah. And one thing, I mean, I don't know if this would be allowed or not. Just one suggestion with that, because I think that an ID is, can sometimes be tricky too. I mean, you walk to eat your food, you forget your ID, you don't get food, right? I mean, that's in theory what could happen. If we could give like the parent, and I, I don't know if our food service providers would go for this or if it would even be legal. But if we can give our parents a, a piece of paper with the ID on it and take a picture of it. And then let's test and see if we can scan from a picture on our phone, um, to that. So at least like, I mean, a lot of people have phones that they carry with them. They might be able to just open up the ID and scan that and get, get the meal. Might be something that helps a lot of families out rather than juggling around a bunch of ID cards or whatever it may be. I mean, even the case with students. I mean, once we go back to in-person instruction, if we could do that for students as well, it would cut down on some of the, the contact and the extra things to accumulate germs. And even for bus passes, if it's possible. I don't know if that's even doable with that. And, and I can't believe I'm, I'm going to say this now, but I, I will defend Desi for a second with what you said. I actually think Desi's applied for the waiver to continue the summer program. But it's actually the USDA and the federal government that from what I'm told, won't even answer the phone to see if, if that's happening. So I mean, Desi wants us, from my understanding, to be able to run our food service program into the summer guidelines. But it's more the federal government that is blocking that. And they are not allowing us to do that. So which means that, I mean, it, it takes food out of kids' mouths. I mean, someone who's not enrolled in school. I mean, there are plenty of kids who are under the age of five, under the age of six and aren't enrolled in school, cannot get food like they did during the summer.
Thank you, Mr. Shan. Ms. Paliciano-Sims, no question?
No, um, Devin asked the question that I wanted to do, but I wanted to just actually go back to the assistance, like, with Anthony was talking about in regards to like needing extra staffing for, you know, all the issues that are, will arise as teachers need help and everything else. And we were talking about the collaboration with HCC. Have we reached out to some of the HCC students and some of the like special ed teachers, the education teachers and the technologies? Because like I know that my daughter who has practicum this year is not able to do her practicum, um, to meet graduation requirements. But if students like that were able to assist and meet some of the, the guidelines in which to help or assist a teacher. I was just curious and that might be an idea.
Oh, so yes, some universities have reached out to me. So there's, so there's two kind of parallel uh, uh, you know, technology approaches to take. The IT infrastructure, which is what is under Mr. Soto, which is kind of the infrastructure, the troubleshooting, you know, all of that stuff. But then to your point, the instructional, helping teachers building, you know, being instructional coaches when it comes to instructional technology. So there, there, there were, there are two universities that, um, we, that has approached students, I think they're graduating from a, a master's in, in educational technology who possibly are willing to, to work with us and, and supporting that work as well. Because we do have a lot of troubleshooting from that end. You know, how do I do this log? That is not really an IT function, but more of a instructional technology function. So we, we have those conversations and two universities have reached out to support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paliciano-Sims. Ms. Burks?
Okay, I have three questions. Anthony should probably pop back on because I think you're going to end up answering a couple of them. So the first one, a parent had asked me to ask this question, which is, because we're doing online instruction and kids are going to be in front of the screen so much. They're questioning whether or not the district's going to be providing the blue light glasses. So that we're mindful of kids' eyes and what the screen time will do to them. So that was one question. I don't know if you want to answer that and then I'll ask another.
That's not, I mean, that's not something that we had considered. Honestly, this is the first time I'm hearing that. I'll go back with our team. I, I think one of the biggest challenges we have right now is resources. And the fact that the state hasn't finalized their budget, it's really hard to answer how much additional we can do to, um, you know, I, I think that we're, we're really, we're really fortunate right now that we even got devices. I saw an email circulating with all the school business administrators across the state on, you know, some of their Chromebook orders getting, getting canceled because they were being shipped from China and there's some kind of embargo going on. And they're now not, not even going to get devices until like January or December. They had to re-put their order. Super thankful that we, you know, we were able to get our orders in back in April. And we're really lucky that we're going to have a device for every student. But that's not something we thought about. I'll, I'll come back to the team. Will, you know, if we're in a position where, where financially we're able to do something like that, um, we will.
It was one of the questions I promised I would ask, so I did. And then another question, so hitting a little bit off of Devin. What about the kids not eating? So if we're saying that we're going to be mindful and we're going to have to check in and it's going to be more rigorous of checking in every student for eating, are we also going to be paying attention? Because our district's the one that we give kids breakfast and lunch no matter what. So what happens if we have kids or families that aren't going to be showing up and they're not getting meals? You know, are we going to be paying attention to that as well to make sure that those students are in fact eating?
Yeah, I would imagine that our, our family engagement office is going to be looking at that data. Just like we're going to be looking at, uh, data around, um, student engagement and their, their academics work. You know, we, we have a strong family engagement team and I'm, I'm sure that that's data that will interest them and that they'll be following up to make sure that, that families are getting what they need.
And then the next one, I'm probably going to sound very naive and Devin will probably know the answer to this. So for some of the students, they got those, um, the EBT cards to pay for food while we were in the remote learning. Like is that something that's still happening? So Devin, is that what you were speaking upon? When you were talking about like the federal government not wanting?
It was more of what Mr. Soto was saying, that our food service program, so there's two food service programs. There's the Universal School Lunch Program, which runs school start to school end. There's the summer program, which we've been running since March. And that just, as he mentioned, lets you, five, five kids, here's five bags of food, cash marks, five along your way. It's just more regulated. The pandemic EBT that was set up with federal money funneled to the state. The PEBT that allowed, I think it was $399 or like $5.24 a day or something that went to students. And that's something the federal government would have to allocate that money to the state, to be able to have the state make that available for families. I mean, who knows if that would happen? I would, I would encourage people though, if they got pandemic EBT, that they don't throw out their cards, that they hold on to it with the just in case that they might be refilled for money. But I mean, that's, that is not a guarantee at all. And I think that that, even when the federal government allocated the money, it was mid-May, I think, or so, when some of those went out, like late April, early May, around there. And, um, the Devin Sheen opinion on this is I'm not sure that the federal government is, um, there's a big push by the US Department of Ed and Executive Office that, um, there is a push to be in-school, in-person instruction for every student. So I'm not so sure that there would be some of these, um, programs approved by different government agencies to support non-in-class in-person instruction. But we'll see. I mean, our Secretary of Education hasn't been seen in weeks publicly, so, and, or any reopening items. So I'm not sure what she's been doing, uh, but it hasn't been working on pandemic EBT or the USDA to free up some of our meal programs.
So I guess for me, I'm just really concerned of making sure that we're kind of tracking and paying attention. Because that might give us more information about some kids that might have more risk factors as well. Especially if the families aren't able to get to the sites. It could give us some really incredible data. So I just want to make sure that, that we're somehow keeping track of that information because I think it's really going to be important.
Absolutely.
I know I see Mr. Wellahan's up, but I don't know if that was from before and he just did a lower the hand. Mr. Wellahan, if you're there.
I'm all set.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wellahan.
How do you, Lori?
Oh, oh, um, where you have to raise hand, where you have the, you got it. Great. No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Tensley-Williams.
This question is for Dr. Vasquez. The students that will be doing remote, uh, training. Now they have a certain code that they have to get in to the computer to do their work. I'm sure the teachers also have a code, but how would the parents know if they have done their work? And I don't want them to wait till the end of the year and don't graduate. How would the parents be able to check to see if they actually did the work?
So that's a great question. So several ways, yes. There, there is a, there is a access, there is a login that will be provided to students for them to log into their devices. So we're going to be very intentional on making sure that we communicate to all parents. One, we're going to actually send, you know, written communications. Two, we're going to have a designated team of, of, of both school and central office individuals that are going to follow up around the access code or password to login, but also. But also, um, the continuation of connectivity with Comcast and making sure that they provide them the code to get access to, um, you know, connectivity internet at their homes. So we'll have a selected group of individuals who will be kind of, um, working and answering phones, both in English and Spanish to help, uh, families, um, have access. Third, um, is also we're going to create, um, a, a series of, uh, video tutorials, both in English and Spanish for students, for families and students can actually, one, watch, watch in a video, um, how to access a device, what are they supposed to do as, as it relates to accessing work or connecting with their teacher, um, as well as, um, tutorials of understanding possible concepts of literacy. Like what should I do at home with my child, you know, when there is, um, doing asynchronous or asynchronous work? Um, when we were talking about, um, the engagement data, one of the things that's in the plan that I'm, then I, and I've been messaging, um, clearly to all, to the principals as well as teachers, is that I will be closely monitoring the engagement data. So when I sit, when I see students that, that, that are disconnected or disengaged or not checking in, because I can actually, um, I will be able to kind of see when students log in and when they log off, as well as staff be able to log in and log off to make sure that they're actually logging in. Um, but there's also a teacher and principal responsibility, as well as the engagement office, to making sure that they're also checking in and making sure that students who are not logging in or doing their work, there's outreach done, either calling home, it might require us actually to do home visits, um, in certain cases, and making sure that the supports are there and that we kind of case manage each situation appropriately.
Now that's what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tensley Williams. Um, I just have two short questions. Um, sorry about this, Mr. Soto, but I know we spoke a lot about meals, um, for the students. My question is for those students that are placed out of district due to, say they're placed into the, um, therapeutic intervention schools and those schools are in different other cities. They may go according to whatever the city that they're currently located, whether or not they're going to be remote or in person and obviously providing those families a choice as to how they do, do things. So in respects to meals, would they still be considered under Holyoke Public Schools? Or would they have to go to the school that they were sent to for out of district? And let's say that those schools don't provide that or don't provide that service, then?
No, they're, they're, they're living in Holyoke, they're enrolled through us. We happen to put them in a, a district placement, so we would be able to, you know, uh, lump them into our food service program. If they showed up to one of our sites, we, you know, they're in School Brains as, um, as our students. So, um, they'd be able to get a meal, no problem through our program.
So then my question would be, because I know that you didn't keep track of names or anything, so then it might be, um, Ms. Courier. Um, have we notified those families that were sent out of district of the, the benefits and supports that they have through our district and respects to meals and stuff like that, um, so that they can as well go if their child ends up doing it through remote learning?
I have a feeling Mary Ann's not there. Oh, there she is.
I'm, I'm, I'm here. I'm just unmuting and, and getting my video back on.
No problem. Did you hear the question that I was asking?
Yeah, so, so the outreach to, to families that have their, their students in out of district settings, correct? Yes. We actually realized that that was a bit of a gap over the summer, um, that we, we make sure that our, our information is going out through, um, you know, through our Facebook posts and, um, and, and things like that. But, but we did, we realized after speaking with a number of families that they were not getting all of the information. So that we are coming up with a system that we can make sure that all of our families are getting that information. Right now, just because you, you spoke about out of district, we are, um, working with all of our providers to, um, to get a list of, you know, or to get a, 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 you know, a, a list, I guess, you know, for, for better words of, um, what our, of the services they are offering. If it will be hybrid, how much will be in-person, how much will be remote? So that we are also reaching out to all of our families to see what their decisions are for their children in out of district settings. And that's something that we will make sure that we are providing to all of our out of district families is the information for what the district is able to offer as well. So yes.
Okay, because what I am aware of, like, um, with one of them is in regards to meals, um, it, it's based off of where the school is located. It's not based off of, um, so the child lives in Holyoke and you know, the students in Holyoke are all free, free breakfast, free lunch, right? The whole city. But the, because the school's in a different district now, um, it doesn't go that way. It goes now according to that district. So I just wanted to make sure that those, that we do notify the families that have their children in the different settings of out of district placement, that they're aware that if they do choose to do remote learning versus in-person, if their out of district placement offers it, that they are still eligible, their student, the students are eligible for, for the meal, um, for them, for their student, for the child.
Definitely. We'll, we'll make sure that we advertise that, but I do have to say that we have worked with a number of the out of district schools that are in, you know, in different towns and because we've actually provided meals for those students. So, um, so we can certainly talk more offline if that's something that is an issue at some schools. Because we have actually made sure in several schools that are not in Holyoke that those students are being afforded the same that our students in district are receiving. So Mildred, you and I can definitely connect offline because I think whatever school that might be is giving some wrong information.
Sounds great. Thank you, Mary Ann.
Welcome.
And then my last question had to do in regards to answering of any questions, um, that, um, a family member might have from a diff, you know, all your various departments. Um, is there always someone available in the various departments? Or when families contact, are they actually, is it somebody who's actually in the office or are they mainly working from the home? How, how is that at the, at the district office and are, or, because I'm assuming that you still can't have people in person?
So depend, yeah, so there, there are, there, there's a protocol and there's a, phone calls do get forwarded to individuals' phones, whether they're hope, remote or not. So we have the main number and we also have that con, that, that contact form that people can fill out and call. So if they're, if they're not getting a phone call within the allotted time, which is, you know, the 48-hour, trying to get back to individuals, you know, feel free to, to call my office. Um, because I do know, you know, my team on my, on my floor is answering phone calls. Um, as what I know, um, Mary Ann's office is people at her office, um, as well, as well as the enrollment office. So, um, if no one's answering, please reach out to my office.
I'll definitely let people know because I've had that question asked, you know, they haven't gotten an answer or nobody answers the phone. It's, you know, who's available, but I will definitely let them know that they can press three, um, to the superintendent's office. All right. Well, that's all the questions I had. So, uh, we're closing out that chapter of our, of our school committee meeting agenda. And now, um, next on the agenda was an update on the school reopening team from Mr. Sheen.
I mean, I don't think I really have anything to update. I think this presentation covered, covered most of it. Um, I will say at our last meeting, which was Thursday, um, there was some discussion on frequency of meeting. And I think that there was consensus on that, that the group would continue to meet, but possibly not in a weekly fashion once, uh, schools reopen, because a lot of the tasks by that committee have, as schools reopen, the tasks fall into the principal and the groups that are in there, but it will still continue to meet to talk, especially when there's transitions, um, depending on student learning and cohorts and so on, that may be going back. But I, I don't really have any other update other than what went out there. I think everyone got the email, um, late last week with the, um, the, the plan that was sent out and I, I think that that's all there unless there's any questions specifically about the committee's work.
Thank you, Mr. Sheen. Um, so next on the agenda was, uh, communications from you, Dr. Vasquez Mazzos.
No, that my communication was the update to this, to the plan.
That was good. Moving on to new business. Um, the first agenda is nominations for president-elect of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. I know that we had submitted a name for a nomination last month and that was, um, Ms. Deb Davis from Woburn. And, um, I know that there's some questions in regards to what does it mean when we do it as a, as a school committee, um, submitting the name, submitting a name. So it's just like, um, when you're signing somebody's nomination form for when they're running for office, um, that they go knocking on your door and you might find two different people, you're giving them the opportunity to get their name on the ballot. Um, so I was approached again, um, prior to our meeting by two, two individuals. One, we had, we did present her last time. That was, um, school committee woman Andrea Wadsworth. And the other one, um, was school committee member Denise Hurst from Springfield. Um, so they both, um, uh, reached out to us to see if we would, um, not put their name into the nomination for president-elect. So just so everyone's aware, the president-elect position is then chosen by the delegate assembly. Um, so it's delegates from across the state, um, that will then vote. If I'm not mistaken, and I want to make sure, Mr. Sheen, if you're there, um, clarify me if I'm incorrect, but to my understanding, it is the delegate assembly that will choose at the end who will become the president-elect for MASC. And kind of what that's like, it's the, the people who are nominated will go in front of the delegate assembly via, via Zoom, because obviously that's how it's being done this year. And they're going to kind of sell themselves. They're going to talk about why they feel that they would, they are most appropriate to be elected for president-elect. So I bring it forth because it's, I have to. It's just, just like when we get public comment, right? Out of respect, we're going to listen to what, um, people have written to us. So at the same time, I did say that yes, I will bring it into the, as an item agenda. The only way it moves forward is if I have a motion, um, to, um, present, uh, for nominations for president-elect, those two individuals for MASC. Wait a minute, I'm sorry.
Do you want the motion now?
Oh, that was, okay, that was Aaron. For some reason, when I looked up, I see Liz like if.
Oh, yeah, I'm here. I'm just not on camera, you know.
Okay, so I have a motion from, um, Ms. Burnell, um, uh, for, to move forward a nomination for president-elect. Uh, that would be Andrea Wadsworth and Denise Hurst for MASC. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, Ms. Feliciano Sims? Okay, so I have a motion with a second. So now I would need a roll call, please. Ms. LaFond.
Can you just re-describe exactly what we're voting on?
So we are voting on that.
No, I mean, like, it, you know.
So what we're doing is that as a Holyoke School Committee Board, right? We are saying that, um, to put forth these two names to be, it's a ballot, okay? But, um, and it'll be, we already nominated and put forth to have this other person's name on the ballot, Deb Davis. Two more people would like their names put on the ballot so they have a chance to speak in front of the delegate assembly. And that will be Andrea Wadsworth and Denise Hurst. Now those two others need five school committee members to vouch for them and say, put them on the nomination. So that then, when they go in front of the delegate assembly to kind of sell themselves, then they're, you're giving them that opportunity.
I just making sure we weren't giving like an individual endorsement and it's just giving them the opportunity to be heard.
It's to have, right, it's the same thing as when someone comes knocking on your door and you might have two people from Ward Three and you're giving them the chance to have their names both on the ballot. That's what it's for. We're not endorsing anybody. So they don't actually get a vote from Holyoke. Um, whoever the delegate is, has the option, when they go to the delegate assembly, to say yes or no, or, or pick nobody. Um, Ms. Burks, you have a question. Well, so we have a, we have a motion, we have a second. Um, so I didn't do a roll call, but I do discussion first or is it after Mr. Sheen? After the vote?
First.
First, right? Discussion first. So Ms. Burks?
So the last meeting, we brought forth, um, somebody. So I guess for me, I have a couple like concerns slash issues with this and why I'm not really going to support this. Um, and it's because, you know, we had somebody that originally came forward, we supported them, we sent that unanimously forward. Um, and now here we are at the last minute, getting two additional names, which earlier it was one, now it's two. Um, so for me, like, we've already submitted somebody and sent somebody forward as, as a committee. Um, I don't know any of the three. I am the newbie on the board. Um, but I just, I don't know, like, I feel like it, it should have all come at once or it just seems a little weird and it just, it doesn't feel right after we've already done it unanimously, um, to now do it again for somebody else. Like, it seems ingenuous, I guess. But that's just my feeling on it.
And just so that everybody's also aware, um, whoever wants, wants to be put into the nomination for president-elect, they had 35 days, if I'm not mistaken, from when, um, the members of MASC, so the membership. So Holyoke is, is a membership. So we are members. So each of you would have gotten, um, like, some pamphlet. And once you received that pamphlet, it already indicated on there those that were nominated for certain positions for MASC that they went in front of the nominating committee. And then there was the one position that was vacant because no one submitted for it. At which time, anybody in the association or anybody in the membership, so any school board member that's part of the membership had the ability to apply to be put on the nomination. But they had 35 days from when everybody res, uh, that the mailing went out with the nominating committee's report, to have five school committees to meet and say, we'll put their name on. So I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that technically somebody actually has until the 19th. As long as they can get five committees and say, I want to be a part of it and everything is submitted immediately because August 20th was the last day that anybody.
So when did the original one come in? And the 19th is two days from now. So when did the new ones come in? Um, just for points of clarification.
So I do want to say that the first one, Ms. Wadsworth, was part of the original first one, okay? So hers came in. And then after our other school committee meeting that we had last month in July, right? Because we're in August. Uh, about three days later is when I received the request from another school committee member that wanted their name. And so at first I thought our meeting was the 24th and I'm like, I don't think I can bring it. It'll be past the time. Um, but then when I realized that our meeting was the 17th, out of fairness, they can see because it's public knowledge. I don't want people to feel like I'm not providing them that ability. That, um, I noticed that it was the 17th and not the 24th. I had my dates wrong. So I went back and I said, you know, I do apologize. Our meeting is the 17th. I'll be more than happy to put it on the agenda and, and go from there. So that's how that happened.
Got it.
Okay. Any further questions before we go to roll call vote? Okay, so roll call. So this would be to send? So this would be to send um the other two names to be on the nomination for um president-elect and which that will be voted by members of the delegation.
Yes, it's not an endorsement, it's just to move forward nominations for Andrea Wadsworth and Denise Hurst for MASC President-elect 2021. Ready? Mayor Morris? Ms. LaFave?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Same.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
No.
Mrs. Burks?
I, I would rather not, but yeah, I mean, if, if the committee, I, if the committee wants to go forward, then I'll be in agreement with the committee.
Thank you. Ms. Feliciano-Sims?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Willenhead?
Oh.
Mr. Collmore's not with us. Mr. Krishane?
Yes.
Thank you.
What was the vote?
It was uh two noes and one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, five yeses and one abstained.
One abstained. So two noes. I just want to make sure, I don't want anybody to feel like they have to vote yes, so um I want you to vote how you want.
Point of order, the vote has been called.
So that's, it's passed, right? So that means I have to sign the paper. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so moving on, my next. Hold on. I was right, oh my goodness, I'm on the wrong, there we go. The next thing on the new business is the policy draft for the face coverings. If I'm not mistaken, it's just so that we post it on the school committee page on the HPS website for public comment, like three days before our next meeting, Liz, or do we vote? We don't need to vote on this, it's just.
There's, no, this is just to inform you that the policy has come in and we will put it up on the website for two weeks for public comment. Um and then it will go, any public comment and the draft policy will go to Dr. Vee and um make a determination from there, what happens next.
Okay, okay, so it's just, just so, it's just informational for right now.
Keeping you all on the loop.
Mildred.
Mr. She, yeah, I just saw, Mr. Sheen?
I, I don't know if this should be posted yet. I don't, I think there are some things in it that are not aligned with the plan that we submitted to ESE um after reading both the sixty-six page document and this. I don't think, I think there are some things that are not, um if you do a crosswalk of things in it, there's some things that are not aligned with what we are stating our policies. So it should probably be reviewed and um updated.
But would we, um so I was thinking, if it was posted and corrections needed to be made, would it be something where we would comment on it? So that correction should be made or is it something that we hold on to before?
I think that it shouldn't be posted yet, that I think that we have time that it could be compared to the, what we turned in and what we're going to be doing uh as a district. And I think that it should be looked at to make sure that things are aligned together. So it's the most user-friendly option, because I'm not sure it's the, everything in it is what we're doing as a Holyoke Public Schools.
Agree.
Okay, so if we hold on to it to do the corrections, will it be still going out before our next meeting? Or because by then, there'll be certain students that will be in the schools?
Mildred, you as vice chair, I would say that if you had the opportunity to speak with the receiver and everything was aligned.
Okay, then we can put it in.
If you made the decision to post it on the website to be reviewed, I'd be good with that. But I just think there's some things in it that are not aligned and I, I think that that would probably be best just to take just a quick second look, just around some of the age groups for um wearing masks.
Sounds good. All right, thank you. I just want to make sure that it doesn't have to come back. All right, so that's that. And then ongoing business is the policy draft for the harassment. I guess it was already posted on, on the website and there were no comments, right, Liz?
There were no comments.
And the updated draft of um Mr. Sheen had mentioned just making sure that we have all the names in there of the specific people that, you know, like to fill it in, like who, who you file the complaints with.
Right.
Or who the point contact principals are for, for the each school. So at this point, does this require a vote?
So, I, so I, I adopt a policy, so I'm going to put a pause on that policy based on feedback I received from legal. And so it would have to, it will come back um once again um for further review.
Okay. All right. And Ms. Burks, you had your hand up. Is that, that's old hand up? Okay. So the um next on the agenda is announcements. I know that our next school committee meeting is September twenty-first. Oh, Rebecca, I'm sorry, Ms. Burks, now you got a question?
I have an announcement, but SPAC meeting Wednesday night, that's really important for families to know about because Mary Ann Courier is going to be going over questions and making sure that our specialized families have the answers that they need. Um and she's going to be supporting them. So Wednesday night, families, if you're paying attention, please log in, sign up um and come to the Zoom meeting, get your answers to the questions that you have and get them from the people that really hold the answers. So you get facts and not internet rumors or fiction or he said, she said. Um you'll get it straight from Mary Ann, which is key to making sure that you have accurate information. So just an FYI, the, the, if you could please go, log on, register um for the meeting Wednesday night, Special Ed Parent Advisory Meeting, the phenomenal group of families um coming together to help each other with a lot of support from Mary Ann and her team. Um and it's a great run meeting, so if you can, please go on, register and come and ask your questions so we can make sure that you're getting the services and the help that you need um and try to alleviate some of your frustrations. So that's it.
Would that be posted on your, on the Facebook page, the Zoom link, or do they have to register first, Becky?
So it's posted pretty much everywhere in that um the new posting actually gives the link to be able to register because what we want to do is make sure that we have follow-through. Um parents are going to be submitting questions, Mary Ann's going to be answering them real time along with her team members. Um the really great meeting, you know, Dennis is now the president of the CPAC, so um they've worked really well with trying to orchestrate this and red, you know, make sure that everybody can get their questions answered. Um but it's, it's, it's really important because there's so much misinformation out there and instead of alleviating parents' fears, we're escalating them. Um so it's really important for parents to log on to get the facts so we can keep, you know, the information streamlined, easy um and make sure that people are really grasping it. So yes, please register, it's on Facebook, it's everywhere, we're plastering it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Burks, for that announcement. Are there any other announcements? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Wait a minute, somebody's got to give me the motion first.
Motion.
Irene seconded by Ms. Tensley-Williams. Roll call, please.
Ms. LaFave?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel? Is she gone?
Uh huh.
Sorry. Mrs. Burks?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano-Sims?
Yes.
Mr. Willenhead?
Yes.
And Mr. Krishane?
Yes.
Thank you.
And uh Ms. Brunel, I guess her computer died out, so she texted me that she spiritually says yes to adjournment. Laugh out loud. So meeting is adjourned eight twenty-one. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful night.